Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the meeting of the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners. This is our October 21st, 2019 meeting to order. We work by a prepared agenda. The first item on the agenda is our invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask my friend Pastor Peter Dodge of the Redsville Alliance to come forward and lead our invocation, and I'm going to ask him to remain at the podium and lead our pledge of allegiance.
All right.
Please rise.
Friends, would you bow your heads with me this evening? Father in heaven, as the Psalmist prayed for the nation of Israel, I pray over this boardroom tonight. May you be gracious to us and cause your face to shine upon us, that your ways may be known upon the earth, and your salvation may be known among the nations. We thank you this night, Father, for all the ways in which you have been good to us, and that you caused the sun and the rain to come in their seasons, you caused fruit and grain to grow from the ground, you give life to our bodies, you give wisdom to our minds, you have given us leaders whose hearts you guide like streams of water. You have established the men of this commission to do righteously and justly for the people of Rockingham County, and we thank you for them. We ask this evening, Lord, that you would fill these men with wisdom and knowledge. Would you strengthen them in their inner being to govern with mercy and to administer -- with -- administrate with grace? Keep them from the temptations of greed and power, and protect them also from those who would seek to distract them or to take advantage. Give to them everyone a willing and compassionate heart to serve this community for the good of others and for your glory, oh God. May truth prevail in this hall this evening, may virtue be practiced by all, may unity and harmony crown our heads, and may equity be our refrain. May our county and the people of it be ever vigilant to grow in Christian character, and may we always cling to what is right. May we eternally champion the cause of the oppressed, and may our example lead this nation to stay the course of liberty and justice for all. In the righteous name of our Father, in the glorious name of the Son, and the powerful name of the Holy Ghost, we pray. Amen. Friends, will you join me in our pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
All right, gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the October 21st agenda. You've had a week or so to review the agenda. This time, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda as provided?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the agenda, with the exception of pulling item eight. And under item 11, we would like to be recessing rather than adjourned.
Okay. Yeah, and gentlemen, also under number nine, under new business, I would like to add a presentation by Ron Lewis and David Streeter from -- and they're going to be discussing the charters of freedom. Gentlemen, we'll not take any action on this tonight. This will be just for informational purposes only.
Charter of what?
Charters of freedom. And you would add that to your motion. Okay, gentlemen, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. The next item on the agenda is item number five, the consent agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, these are items that are non-controversial in nature. The commissioners have had an ample time to review them. If anyone in the audience has any questions about any of the items contained on the consent agenda, you can contact our Assistant County Manager, Mr. Paul Mary, and he'll be glad to answer any of the questions that you may have tonight.
I just got one question on consent. I didn't get a chance over the week to ask about it, but the soil and water proposed changes, what exactly is that?
Is -- I don't know if Jason's here. I don't see Jason here.
I didn't know if y'all knew.
I got my iPad downloader. Somebody got the packet that they can pull that up. It'd be item number F. And I looked at it, and there was just some language to the bylaws that was presented. It was not -- or changes to the ordinance itself, I'm sorry. And they were all minor changes. I didn't see any -- anything that would bring any concern to me. I don't know if any of the other commissioners have anything to add to that.
No.
Yes, they deleted part of one section. There's a deletion of some language in there, trying to see it, and then modified a small section, so.
Nothing major. Okay, I'm good with it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I got a motion by Commissioner Travis. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I got a second by Commissioner Berger. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Item number six, public comment. We have no one signed up to speak tonight, gentlemen. Moving along to item number seven, 7A. I ask Ms. Carrie Spencer to come forward. This is Bruce Lloyd owner, Janice Stoltz Hampton Road, from residential agriculture, residential protected. This is a zoning case. This will be a public hearing. Ms. Spencer?
Is this going to residential agriculture, right?
Correct.
It is actually. The zoning request is so that the applicant can conduct a rural family occupation. He owns a HVAC business on the property, and this zoning and subsequent special use permit that the zoning board, the planning board would grant, would allow him to legally continue use of the property as it is now. So rural family occupations are not allowed in the RP, so we are going from RP to RA. So that's the long and short of it. The end game is the special use permit. The resident needs to rezon in order to apply for the special use permit. The business has been in business for some time. Again, this is just to bring it into conformity with the regulation.
Go ahead, Commissioner Rich.
Carrie, does -- I take it from what you just said that there's no proposed additional building, no structures?
Not at this time. There is a site plan that will accompany the special use permit, and the application for that permit only includes existing buildings right now. So if he were to add more, he or she would have to come back for a revised special use permit.
Okay.
I got no problem with it. I'm good.
All right. I move for approval, sir. We've got to have a public hearing. All right. At this time, I declare the public hearing open. I declare the public hearing open on resounding case number 2019-012. Number 2019-012. Is anyone -- we've got one person signed up to speak in favor of it, I think, is Mr. Bruce Lloyd. Bruce, is there anything you want to say?
I've just signed up, so if you have any questions, I'd be your answer.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody that didn't sign up that would like to speak in favor? Is there anybody that didn't sign up that would like to speak against? Anybody that didn't sign up would like to speak against? No further entities wish to speak. I declare the public hearing closed. All right, now, gentlemen, I'll entertain any further discussion you may have on the topic.
Go ahead, Mark. Go ahead and make your motion, Mark.
All right, now, I'll entertain that motion. He was so anxious to make a move approval of 7A. Okay, I got a motion presented to include a statement and analysis.
Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner Rich to approve resounding case A, to include a statement and analysis, a second by Commissioner Travis. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Item number B.
This one is better represented in -- okay, next case, 2019-14, is a request to rezon from residential agricultural to residential protected property owners or the potential property owner's intent is to build a major, develop the property as a major subdivision, therefore requiring the rezoning from RA to RP. A 20-acre portion of an 88-acre lot is being requested. This is the location of the lot. I -- what? There's a button I have to press so that people can see it.
It's a magic button. There you go.
Sorry, thank you, Emily. This shows the location of the property in relation to the land use plan, and this map shows a close-up of the property, closer up of the property, showing that it's just the front portion of the acreage on Gideon Grove Church Road. An aerial view of the property being requested for zoning. Applicable strategies and policies from the land use plan are strategy number eight, develop residential design alternatives to bring -- to limit suburban residential sprawl while providing opportunities for developers to choose patterns which are appropriate for their individual markets. Strategy number 12, providing housing opportunities that meet a wide range of affordability. Growth management policy guidelines that apply are residential development, agricultural and rural preservation because of the rezoning only beyond the front side, and of course, affordable housing, which is encouraging the property owner to build a market rate house, a market rate product. I'm going to go back to here, entertain questions, and leave it here for any comments from the audience.
Okay. All right, we have -- gentlemen, I'm going to open the public hearing, then we'll come back for questions, if that's okay.
Okay, sure.
We have several people, five people signed up to speak. Before opening the public hearing, I'm going to get the county attorney to share with you the rules of engagement during the public hearing.
Certainly. All those desiring to speak at one of today's public hearings will register at a sheet located at the rear entrance to the commissioners' room. Sign-up sheets will be posted one hour prior to the beginning of commissioners' regular meeting. The chairman will establish time limits for speakers, which will be three minutes, based on the number registered. Speakers will be called in the order in which they register unless otherwise directed by the chairman. Each person should state his or her name and address for the record. Prior to the beginning of his or her remarks, the speaker will address only the issue currently being heard. All speakers will be heard before any rebuttals are recognized. All comments should be addressed to the chairman. Appropriate polite conduct as expected. Anyone indulging in personal attacks, shouting, or other disruptive behavior will forfeit their right to speak, and if necessary, ask to leave the meeting. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have five individuals signed up to speak. I'm going to call them in the order in which they signed up. The first gentleman is Mr. Steve Ahern. If you would, Mr. Ahern, come forward. Give us your name and address, and you'll be allowed to speak. Thank you.
Steve Ahern, 410 Carriage Drive, Stonewall, North Carolina. I am the applicant for the rezoning, asking, requesting a straight rezoning to RP. And if you have questions, if not, you may want to let them address their concerns, and then I can have an opportunity for rebuttal. It's up to the chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions with Mr. Ahern?
Not at this time.
Okay. The next gentleman signed up to speak is Mr. Robert Griffin. Mr. Griffin, if you'll come forward and state your name and address.
I'm Robert L. Griffin, 1139 Gideon Grove Church Road. I'm approximately a couple hundred, two, three hundred yards from where the land is going to, the houses are going to be built. Totally just cannot believe that after 200 years of farm, farming on this land, somebody wants to come in. And we spoke at Williamsburg about this, and it's going to be well after well after well after well. When's my well going to run dry after he builds 70 houses? And he, yes, he says 20. He says 20, but that's bull crap. He's got 100, he's got right at 100 acres. He's going to build 70 houses right there. I counted that, counted two days ago. That man right there rode down the road on his tractor, he had eight cars on his tail, bumper to bumper. He's a farmer. This is farmland. This is not, this is not Eden, this is not Redsville, this is Ellisboro. This is a farm community. I wish we had Future Farmers of America here tonight listening to this, because this is y'all's decision to make. This is y'all's decision to make whether the 48 kids can see that the farm, there is still farmland in Rockingham County. These people, we don't know where the water's going to run when all these houses are built. These cars are going to zip up and down the road. The trucks coming in to build these houses are going to tear the roads up. No law enforcement. We have no law enforcement in that area. Still, you've still got a case where a man's been murdered for two years now, just like Jennifer Short case, because we don't have, we have none of this over there, and you're going to put 70 more houses in there, school buses. There was, there was a school bus on the road at five minutes till five today. How they gonna, what, you know, school gets out at three o'clock. Well, used to, I don't know, I'm past school, but, you know, they're going to be getting home at 5:30 and 6:00, delivering all these kids home. It's not, it's not feasible. I understand Mr. Ahern's in the business, but it's not feasible for him to build these houses on this farmland. Thank y'all for listening to me.
Thank you. And I apologize if I mispronounce this. Is it Tommy Gentry?
Yes, please.
Mr. Gentry, if you would come forward, give your name and address.
I'm Tommy Gentry. I'm 1117 Gideon Grove Church Road. I've lived there my whole life. Farm that we live on has been in our family for several hundred years. Matter of fact, the piece that is up was in our family at one time. I'm sort of like Mr. Griffin. The water levels, drilling all these wells, you know, they're getting deeper and deeper, and people are running out of water. I don't, I don't want my well to run out. I know that the contractor's probably not wanting to hook up to county water, even though it's only less than, it's less than three miles away, but I'm sure he's probably not going to want to do that. You build all these houses, you got extra water runoff, running into the creeks. We got something that probably doesn't bother a whole lot of people, but it does me. I like living out in the country. I like the sort of slowed-back life of it. Light pollution. Everybody that moves out there cuts down every tree they can find and puts up nightlights. No joke. I mean, you ride out through the country now, and there's nightlights everywhere. I'm not afraid of the dark that much. I don't need a nightlight. Again, the traffic on the, for the farmers that are already out there, that are trying to make a living through that. Me and Bobby both were sitting on the front porch the other night, tractor went down the road, there's eight cars behind it. And it's not that they're behind it patiently waiting to find a place to pass. You couldn't have dropped a match between any of them hardly. I mean, they were just bumper to bumper, and the tractor couldn't go anywhere. And the county needs to help with some regulations on what they're doing with all this farmland. I noticed, if you look at the map, I was just looking at it there, the yellow's where the developments are already at, the red, of course, is where he's trying to put in. There's a lot of development already gone on out there in that part of the country. Too much. We've got 100 acres out there, and I don't point any fingers at anybody. I'm going to tell you a little story. Last year, I went out, we had free dump day. I went down to my backside of my farm. Thank you, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to take up so much time.
You still got a minute.
Okay, okay. Went down to the backside of my farm, cleaned up a field on my farm that has a road running through it. Worked all day long. 30, 40 tires, televisions, you know, just junk, throw it out in my field. Cleaned all of it up, loaded it up on the truck, took it to the county landfill, had to pay for the tires because they won't take them, but anyway. Dumped it, coming back home, and I said, "I'm going to ride down there and see how good that looks." I swear, I rode down there that afternoon on the way back, somebody had took a dump truck of trees and dumped on it. Just cut up trees, dumped right in the middle of the field. Had to clean all that up. Four-wheelers, dirt bikes, the more people we get out there, the more we have that. I mean, they honestly think they own the land beside of them. They don't stay on their acre land. They're riding all over us. Back to construction trucks, you know, your dump trucks, your cement trucks, all that, they're doing damage to the roads. And back again. I just like farming life. I like it a little calmer like it is right now out there, and don't want to see anything built up like this. We appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you. Mr. J.B. Colley? Mr. Colley, if you would, state your name and your address.
I'm J.B. Colley. I live at 108 Winding Creek Road. On my property, if you look on the map, it, I saw way down the right-hand side of it. My main concern is the water issues. My neighbor just drilled a well across the road in his cow pasture. It was dry. He had to go another one, 600 feet, he got a gallon a minute. I've got wells at my place, and I do farm. I rely on water and have to have a lot of water for a greenhouse, for spray tanks. If we let, keep building houses, what, who is going to guarantee me that I've got a supply of water when the water runs out? Because we're at a low limit now. I've got a well that's 650 feet deep, it's got a gallon a minute in it. If you drill 20 more of those at 650 feet deep and a gallon a minute, sooner or later, we're going to run out, if it's all in the same vein. And it's obvious around from Fallen Brook and the other subdivisions that they're deep wells with minimum water. The next thing is 20 driveways tied back to Gideon Grove Church Road. If Mr. Ahern wants to put a subdivision in there, I feel like he needs to put his own street in with accessible access for fire trucks, EMS, that they can get turned around in and out in the case of emergency, instead of everybody going in and out off of Gideon Grove Church Road with this many driveways. It's just real, bothers me real bad that we're going to keep building and building and building, and our resources for Rockingham County is at a minimum. I'm in the fire department. EMS goes on a regular basis down to no units in a day. And we've got two deputy sheriffs after 6:00 at night covering the west side of the county. I don't think we're ready to keep building and building and building. There's houses, we just put houses on Gideon Grove, right next to Mr. Gentry's farm on one side. Mr. Ahern's building two houses up on Simpson Road in Gideon Grove. He's got numerous houses on Price Farm Road. Sooner or later, we're going to run out of volunteers to come running every time somebody needs some help. And then, back to the water issue, that's a main concern of mine. Because if my water runs out, I want to know who's going to pay to get me some water. It's not my responsibility. I've been there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tommy Middleton?
Let me out, JB.
Let me out.
Yes, my name is Tommy Middleton. I live at 1882 Gideon Grove Church Road, Chairman Reese, Board of the County Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Everything that I was going to say has probably already been covered, but the only thing I would love to say is, I'm 73 years old, and I've lived in farmland all my life, and I don't really like development. I understand that people make their living developing, but when, my life as a farmer, and I just hate to see this thing change, you know, when the Indians first saw the white man, they lost their land. So when the farmers saw the developers, we're losing our land. So anyhow, the only thing that I would suggest, and I'm not here to fuss or complain, I try to be as neutral as I can be, and what I'm saying is not from real evidence, but it's from just feelings, deep feelings. The use of our land was touched on, and I have experience with that because I've got horses on my land, I've got four-wheelers on my land, and I've got people fishing in my ponds. And so, I'm going to have to get a drone, I guess, to fly over it and see who's doing what. I don't know. But anyhow, all I'm saying is, more people is going to be more problems. Now, as far as the water's concerned, I did some research, but I think all you county commissioners needs to do your research and find out the truth about water. Now, what little I found is, water is in storage areas in the ground called AQUEFRS. Equifers, is that how you pronounce it?
Something like that.
Mark? So there are pockets of water, and that pockets of water can be used up, according to my information. Now, y'all can research it, but I would suggest that you get somebody professional in knowing what the water is like underground, how long it takes to recycle, and so-and-so. So the water issue could be a problem. At my house, I don't have that because I'm two miles up the road. But from experience, my son lives in Oak Ridge, and he does have a problem with it. His well is 400 feet deep, and he can't use all the water he wants. But that's a high-dense area. Thank you for your attention.
You still got a minute, sir.
That's about all I had to say. I just appreciate you paying attention.
Thank you, Mr. Middleton. Is it anyone that hasn't signed up would like to speak in favor or against? Anyone hasn't signed up would like to speak in favor or against? Having no one speak, oh, declare the public hearing closed. Okay, gentlemen, it's time for discussion, or indoor questions you may have.
Yeah, I'll start it off, I guess.
Commissioner Travis?
Yes, I got Carrie, please. Carrie, now, you said this is going to be a subdivision.
That's correct. Well, that's, that's the anticipation of the applicant.
Yeah, I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought, like the gentleman said, a subdivision, a major subdivision over seven. I thought we require a separate road for them houses.
At this time, a major subdivision is six or more lots, and it does not require internal road access.
Okay.
And does not require internal road access. I wanted to make sure that I made my point.
It does not require, okay.
And have a good race.
I guess my biggest concern, and I understand what most of them are saying, I'm concerned about the water situation myself. If you're going down 700 feet trying to get a gallon of water per minute, then the more people you get around that area, the less water you're going to have, unless you've got some kind of major dam river flow going on that I don't know about. So what's your take on that?
There's been, in this area, it does happen to be a very dense geologic rock area, so the aqua firs and fishers in the rock that produce water are harder to find. And you'll find one developer finding a well quickly, another, Colley Brook, for example, taking tens of thousands of dollars to find a well that produces well enough. And that is not a function of the geology so much as, or of the water availability down there, it's a, more of a function of geology. In order to, there are some desktop studies that I can share. The northwest part of Guilford County has done an awful lot of research on this that talk about those formations and what's going on under there. In order to determine exactly and surely what the water, groundwater availability is, you would have to do deep well hydrologic surveys.
Right. Well, you know, I'm concerned about that. That's just one item I'm concerned with, which I'm thinking the commissioners, just so you know, everybody in that area, that, you know, we are looking for infrastructure growth, and that's part of the area too, because I need you to understand, that area is the growth area of the county. Everything is going out that way, and you're going to see more and more people trying to develop out there, unfortunately. It's kind It's coming. Especially around the 68 to 20 triangle, if everybody knows what I'm talking about. And unfortunately, the more Guilford County grows, the more they're gonna come to Rockingham County because their taxes are cheaper, you know, more comfortable to live. Everybody wants that country living but don't want Chick-fil-A in their backyard, you know what I mean? But I understand the residents, their concern, it is my concern too. So, let someone else ask some questions and I'll come back to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Travis. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hall.
We've heard a lot about water tonight, Carrie. Usually, when you get up, you tell us about responsibilities and things we can and can't ask. But, you know, the concerns about water. Talk to us about that, talk to us about the responsibilities with regard to that.
And I'll make eye contact with John as I do this. In my experience, the potential outcome of water availability is not an adequate reason to approve or deny a rezoning request.
Yes, I think there are multiple factors, but one of the major factors which Carrie has briefly mentioned to or alluded to is to make sure that the overall zoning request is in line with the Rockingham County Land Use Plan. There are multiple factors that had to be weighed with that. And Carrie, again, can go into more detail on that.
Where water availability actually comes in more is at the subdivision development opportunity when the Environmental Health Division approves or disapproves wells that the developers is drilling.
So, and that step would be further down the road, should this get approved or denied?
The other step would be a review in front of a technical review committee, of which Environmental Health is a member. As is Jason Byrd.
Thank you.
Commissioner Byrd.
And Carrie, I believe, access issues with regards to number of driveways along roads, that's really a DOT function.
Yes and no. I mean, DOT does not approve residential driveways. They don't approve residential, only commercial driveways. Yeah, and I think they'd be pretty overcome if they did. They do, and it's a good point to bring up, while they don't approve a driveway, if somebody is building a driveway, they ought to contact the DOT to talk about culvert construction at the same time. And I ought to put that on a website or someplace because there's a number to call to coordinate that sort of thing. Off topic, though. The type of regulation that I've seen and have experience with that could eventually someday, while it's not in our ordinance now, is to limit driveway access to minor subdivisions on certain roads in your network. Roads that are thoroughfares, roads that might become thoroughfares, roads that have a certain carrying capacity.
That would be part of the new UDO.
Exactly, we do not have that right now.
Let's don't get off topic.
Okay, excuse me, Kevin, I'm sorry.
And, not this map, but the one that shows the property of what's being rezoned, yeah, this one. It shows RA and RP, and then it's got RM. It looks like RM is yellow, and it's hard to tell the color difference between RA and RP.
RA is white. RA is no color, actually. RP is yellow, and RM over here, can you see my cursor when I bounce it around like?
Not here.
Okay. It's a darker yellow, yeah, it doesn't come out that well. RM is residential mixed use, actually, here.
And right now, this property is zoned RA.
Correct.
And he's asking that this be zoned RP.
Which is like the...
The next step up.
Correct.
And I believe our zoning ordinance and our current land use plan favors residential development. Is that right?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. And so, this is just a, as far as the zoning portion of this, this is one step up from where it's currently sitting.
That's correct, and the...
And part of the reason the vast majority of this map is white is when the land use plan was adopted in the 80s, everything was basically given a designation of residential agriculture.
The ordinance, yeah, when the ordinance was adopted in the 80s after that land use plan, it was giving everything, and everything that wasn't already a subdivision.
All right, so in effect, RA is the default.
I could say that to be true, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Especially in our, if you were to look at the zoning map for the entire county, I would definitely say that to be true, just thinking about, it's mostly white.
I think it's about 96 or 97 percent.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna validate that, but I'll go look it up, I really will. I'll go check it out, I just don't, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Commissioner Richardson?
I may have to refer to Mr. Ahern here in a second. But I do understand that the proposal is for 20 driveways?
The developer, should the applicant purchase the property, he will go in there and do some design and determine how many lots he could get and how many driveways. I do believe the intent is to put all the driveways on the road. But I don't know how many driveways there will be.
Well, if he was fortunate, and we understand, this is not a done deal until he does his due diligence and so forth. 20 driveways, that would put them about 130 feet apart, that's pretty dense. And I just mentioned that for reference to the other folks. Mr. Ahern, you may have to answer that. What's the average house, what are these gonna sell for, round figures?
Not got that far yet, but we haven't done any soil analysis or water anything.
Would 150,000 be close?
That would be probably the minimum. I can't, this is difficult to build a house now for about 150,000.
Would 200,000 be reasonable? You don't have to get...
200 would probably be average.
The reason I mention this, in the past, I was on a planning team as a private citizen. And we were looking at houses, and even a $200,000 house, which is above the average for the county, that would bring in roughly 1,825 bucks worth of property tax. And if you compare it with an average household of 2.2 children, that's gonna cost the county, so for 1,800 or 1,900 dollars worth of tax, we're gonna end up with a $2,640 bill for the school system out of that. And that's just on a per diem basis, and it's, you know, those are not figures you can take to the bank, but it gives you an idea what the county has to pay. Depends on how much we allow the school system as we go forward on that. My brother-in-law used to drill wells. And like a lot of brother-in-laws, I would not vouch or put up significant money that he's spot on. But he did tell me, because I had a similar well to what has been described here that's put in granitic underlayment, that where water moves through cracks. It's not like there's pooled water down there. You may find an aquifer, but it's not very likely. But according to my now-deceased brother-in-law, it takes 1,000 years for water to get down there. And so, what you got is what you got, is what I'm saying. That's only valid if you can identify the property. This may or may not fall in that category. All I know is that there are people with very deep wells that are not getting much water out of it. So, that's a concern of mine. And likewise, I have the concern about the nature of the property. I wish at this time, we did have a new land use plan that takes these very valid concerns into account, but we don't. I would also point out that across the road from your development, Mr. Ahern, we reviewed a property, and it's coming back to us, not under a general rezoning. And I would hate to treat properties differently. I think we ought to be consistent as commissioners. So, consistency, the water, the nature of the environment, rural versus suburban, I think are factors that I'm taking into account. Totally understand where you're going. We look forward to getting you some water so you can have denser housing south of where you're talking about now. Because what you do is very important for all of us in the county. And also for those people looking for affordable housing. So, thank you much, and I appreciate your answers. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, may I have the opportunity to rebuttal of some of the comments?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, certain individuals throwing out, "How many houses?" I don't know how many houses. The first thing I do with a piece of land is have a soil scientist go out and see if the land perks. If the land doesn't perk, I don't buy it. If this land doesn't perk, I may own, I'm not gonna buy it. I'm gonna walk away from the contract. That's in my due diligence of my contract. I don't know on this acreage, if the 20 acres is gonna support four houses or if it's gonna support 19. What I do know is there's one house sitting on it now. She did not, I don't know that she showed the aerial, but there's one house on it now. It's been there a long time, it's an old farmhouse, and it has two septic systems. And it does have a well. And the well that it has is 20 gallons a minute. That's a very substantial well. I just drilled two wells, as they mentioned, yes, I am building up on Simpson Road at the Gideon Grove side. I just drilled two wells, and each of them has 10 gallons a minute. I've been building in this county for 26 years. I'm probably the only builder in the county that I do not do anything until I drill my well. I see other builders that will have the house framed, and I've seen some that have had the houses completed, and the well rigs out in the front yard. For me, that's stupidity, for them, that's their right. But the first thing I do is well, but the well comes after the septic. Both of them have to operate. We gotta have supply and the waste. I have been blessed in my time that I have someone close to me that is a well witcher. And a lot of people may laugh at that. All I can tell you is I've yet to build a house that I didn't have a well. He's been very successful. I'm also blessed to have a soil scientist, which I have not had to use his services so far because of my witcher. But he has the ability to locate, you said, cracks in the ground. And normally where you find the cracks in the ground, by his explanation, is where soils change. She probably doesn't have it, but if you did an aerial on GIS of this property, the soils change. This property has, I believe, four different types of soils on it. She's got the aerial. But it's got four different soils on it. Where your lines are in between your soils is normally where your cracks in the earth are. He has been successful when people have had difficulty of finding water, of finding them water. His recent client in Bethany drilled three dry wells on his lot. He hired my friend, he went out there, he put a flag and he said, "Drill here." And he hit 20 gallons a minute. Now, people can laugh all they want to, but results are results. And my results have been good. The other thing I do that most builders don't, is most builders hand the well driller a permit, and it shows an area about half the size of this room that's 25 feet from the house, 50 feet from the septic system, they say, "Drill." And wherever is convenient for him to put his rig, that's where he drops it and that's where he goes. There again, I take a little more due diligence. I witch it, we walk it, and if you ever watch us witch one, we're out there for a while. But we track the veins, and I take flags, and I do them in a cross, just like you would a stagecoach wheel. And we try to find where we can find at least four veins that cross. And it's been successful for me. I understand exactly what they're saying as far as water. I lived on Gideon Grove Road with a well that was already there. And I had a half a gallon a minute at 600 feet, and I never ran out of water. The reason why is mathematics. If there is a half a gallon a minute in that well, and you do the calculation and you do your storage at 600 feet, and the static level that it has, it has over 750 gallons in the well. Your septic system can only pump, you look at your rating, 360 gallons per day. That's per day. You've got two days reserved in the well, not counting the half a gallon that's coming in a minute. Do your math, gentlemen. Mr. Colley said he had a gallon per minute. That is 1,440 gallons per day, not counting what he's got sitting in the well. Mathematically, he should never run out of water. Can that source go? Yes. Only the good Lord knows what's beneath the earth, how long it's gonna last, and the quality of it. No one can guarantee that. But I do have a track record. You can check my track record as a developer, you can check it as a builder. And I'll stand behind it. I have had no issues. The traffic issue, as you said, this is the growth area. If they don't like traffic, they better go to Stokes County and get up on the mountain. Guilford County's coming this way. I respect the people that own their land, I respect the people that farm it. But they also need to understand, the one gentleman said, "It would never be sold as long as he's living." The reason the farms are being sold is not because of the farmers, it's because the people are no longer farming it. And when their children inherited, or their grandchildren inherited, and they've moved off or they don't farm, they deserve the right to sell their property. The owner of a property has the right to sell it without interference of their neighbors or this board. That is a free right. Now, if they were doing something that was, if I was gonna put up a nuclear plant, yes, there's an argument. But someday, the people that spoke today, their children or grandchildren are gonna be wanting to sell their land to me or someone like me. They may roll over in their graves. But be careful, the example you set, because someday it might come back to bite their families in the butt. Do you have any questions for me?
No questions, thank you.
Carrie, I got a couple of questions for you. And I think, I think that may have already been answered by Mr. Ahern. But that 20-acre lot that we're talking about, plus or minus 20 acres, I think the maximum is 20 houses, but we really don't know that until it goes through technical review.
That's correct. 20, based on the minimum lot size and the fact that you have to factor in topography and availability and soils and everything, I wouldn't imagine it being more than that.
Okay. And we're talking about, basically, we're talking about, and I think Commissioner Byrd may have hit on it, or maybe Commissioner Hall, I can't remember. But basically, we're talking about transitioning from the density in that area. Correct, it's just we're moving, turning one click, allowing a little bit more houses per...
That is correct. Actually, currently, there's 20-acre lot allowance in the RA right now. And RP would allow 30,000 square foot lots with the same water and septic.
And I think I asked you, I was reading earlier, in our UDO and our land use, technically, as it sits right now, he could put up to three houses a year, every three years, on that 20 acres. And it not be, and it remain as it's zoned right now?
Under current zoning, he could actually put in as many as four, or five, four lots, five lots, excuse me, six lots major. And within, he'd have to wait three years to further divide that parent parcel. But the next... years to further divide that parent parcel, but the next subdivision that he could do would be in three years.
So technically, he could do five lots, three years, five lots, three years, five lots, three years.
Yeah, but it...
As it sits right now.
As it sits right now, but the ordinance is a little, is a little tricky there, in just how many times that you could do that before we have to say, "Look, you're, this is a major subdivision."
Okay. And my next question is, the, the acreage behind it, I think there was, I think somebody mentioned 85 acres, or 86 acres?
It's 88 total minus the 20, so 60, 66, 68.
But we're not talking about that acreage tonight. We're talking about just the road front acreage as it exists today.
That's correct.
We're not talking about anything done in addition to that would be a housing, which would require its own road.
That is correct, because the, he may, he may leave some right-of-way along the road, but it would, in order to get back there, it would require a road.
It would require its own public roadway.
And a, and a rezoning.
And a rezoning.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That was my question.
Okay.
Anybody else got any questions of Kerry? Any other comments? All right, at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion from the board or an action.
I'll make a motion to approve with statements and analysis.
I got a motion to approve to include statement and analysis for...
Rezoning case?
2019-014.
Yeah.
For rezoning case 2019-014. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I got a second by Commissioner Hall. Do I have any further discussion? Have any further discussion?
I would just like to point out, this is the same situation we dealt with before, and I really wanna treat both people the same way for consistency.
Okay. Any other comments? Before I call the question. All right. Motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign.
No.
No. Let the record reflect that the vote was three to two. Motion passes. Item number nine, new business. Gentlemen, we added two new business, the charters of freedom. I'm gonna ask Mr. Ron Lewis and David Streeter to come...
Correct.
Did I pronounce that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. To come forward, and you're gonna talk to us a little bit about the charters of freedom. This will not be a action item, gentlemen. This is just for information purposes only.
I just need to exit out of the van. There we go. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come and speak tonight, especially working us into the agenda, and so our special appreciation to the chairman and to the commissioners. I'm David Streeter, my colleague is Ron Lewis. What I'm gonna do is just introduce this just a little bit, and then I'm gonna turn it over to, to Ron and let him go through the presentation, then I've got a few little things at the very end. We will try not to take very much of your time. First of all, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit education organization. Education is the foremost of what we do. Up here in the front, you can see a small model that contains what we call the charters of freedom. That's made up of the Declaration of Independence, the United States Constitution, and the Bill of Rights, much like they are on display in Washington, D.C. And like I said, collaboratively, they are called the charters of freedom. These are not monuments, and I will tell you why. We call them settings. These three documents are the ones that give us all the liberties and helps things that we enjoy in life every day, such as all the freedoms that we have. They are documents that are alive and well. They are used by the courts from the lowest court in any county or city, all the way up to the United States Supreme Court. They are alive and well. If you look at the definition of a monument, it pays homage to a person or a place or thing that's no longer with us. These documents are still with us, and they're very much utilized every day. So based on that, that's the reason that we call them settings instead of monuments. So anyway, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Lewis, and he'll go through the PowerPoint, and then at the end, like I said, I've got just a few things to say, and then we'll take any questions you may have as well. Okay, Ron? I think that will advance it right there.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. Thank you for working us into the agenda. Do we have any veterans on the board? I constantly have to wrestle with Dr. Streeter. See, he was an E3 in the Navy, and I was an O2 in the United States Marine Corps. He normally tells the commissioners, and he outranks me.
No, we don't.
That, that's not right, is it, that commissioner?
No.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, because he, he's told boards, commissioners all over the country that he outranked me. First of all, I wanna tell you that I enjoy these meetings. I'm retired county manager. I spent 38 years in state and local government, and I have also been in all 100 counties. And when I was driving in from the airport this afternoon late, as the sun was beginning to set, I realized that I'm traveling into the heart and soul of North Carolina, because I saw one tobacco barn, two tobacco bars, and it's just a beautiful, beautiful place that you have here in Rockingham County. I was also telling Paul earlier, that in my 38 years, four years I was the assistant county manager, he's got the best job in the house, because he can have his fingerprints on everything, but he's, he's about two steps away from that firing line that the commander, the manager faces on, on a daily basis. I had fortunate, some outstanding wards of county commissioners. As I was looking at your wall out there as I came in, two of your former county managers are very, are very close, personal friends of mine. Jerry Myers and I go back to 1971 at Appalachian. He was, he's a fine man. Tom Robinson's also a very good county manager. And from what I have learned about your county management team, you're very fortunate to have the people that you have. See if I can work this thing. As David Streeter told you earlier, we're a 501(c)(3) private nonprofit. To this date, and we stood the organization up in 2012, but to this date, we have not spent the first tax dollar on any charters of freedom setting anywhere in the country. It's all private money, and we're very, very proud of that. I have told our president and founder on several occasions, Vance let me spend the county's money. And to this day, he has stood fast, and we are yet to spend the first tax dollar. Anybody been to the National Archives Building in Washington? Very good. Wow, I'm impressed. Normally, when I ask that question in a group this size, about 10% of the people raise their hand. That's where our documents are housed and secured and cared for, is in the National Archives Building in Washington. Generally, when I don't get very much response to that, I come back and ask the group, "Have you seen the movie The National Treasure?" And about 80% of the hands in the room go up. It shows the impact that the performing arts has on our society today. Although, many, many people aren't fortunate enough to see the original documents in Washington, but they, they saw the Declaration of Independence stolen from the National Archives Building in a fictitious movie. Let me, if you will, bear with me for a moment, as we walk through these, we walk down this narrow corridor, we walk through these big brass gates, and suddenly, you're in a beautiful rotunda that houses the charters of freedom. The Declaration of Independence is on the left, the four pages of the Constitution are in the middle, and the, the original proposed Bill of Rights is on the right side. Now, in addition to the charters of freedom, there's all kinds of supporting documentation As you might imagine, the documents are in poor shape, even though our country has done everything humanly possible to preserve the founding documents, they have deteriorated with, with age. The Declaration of Independence, the first page of the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights, of all the documents, the Bill of Rights is the, is the most damaged of them Now, any educators on the board? Thank you for your service, sir. There were two founding fathers that were big on education, that being Benjamin Franklin and Thomas Jefferson. The education system that we know today was basically created by those two founding fathers. And my favorite of all the founding fathers is Benjamin Franklin. And I have been known to dress up like Ben. I think in the booklet that I shared with you earlier, there's a couple of pictures of Benjamin Franklin in there. And that's a lot of fun, because the school kids that we interact with also love Benjamin Franklin about as much as I do. But of all the titles that Benjamin Franklin had, the one that's most important to me, and I want to share with you this evening, was that he was the sage of the founding fathers. Now, what does the word sage mean? Well, most of our founding fathers were young men, some in their 20s, and when they got stumped and didn't know the answer to, to an issue or a question, they would go to old Ben, and Ben always had the answer to whatever question that they might have. Thomas Jefferson was the third president of the United States. He did a number of things. One of the things that most people don't know is he was a manufacturer. He manufactured nails in the colonial days. In addition to being a farmer, he made money by the manufacture of nails. Those two gentlemen thought that the education system should be in three different levels, a primary level, a secondary level, and a third level. I wanna talk for a minute about that third level. At the bottom of the third level is something called culture of virtue. Now, our founding fathers were men of faith, and they were men of incredible character. And this culture of virtue that they espoused and what they stood by, really, to a large degree, doesn't exist today in Washington, D.C., because regardless of which party you're affiliated with, we don't have a whole lot of communications going on in our Capitol Building. But the culture of virtue was something that our founding fathers lived by on a daily basis. That's my courthouse, although I had four in my career. The one that I retired from, that's the Historic Courthouse in Burke County, North Carolina, located in Morganton. That was our first charters of freedom. Now, when I first met Vance Patterson, he amazed me in, from the very first moment that I met him, and he built the charters of freedom for the school kids and future leaders in Morganton. Then he went on to build a second one in, in the far west corner of the state in Cherokee. And then he built a third one in Asheville, North Carolina. That was the first three. And then he realized, if he was gonna keep doing this, that he needed a way to financially support his endeavors, and we created Foundation Forward as a 501(c)(3) private nonprofit. And from that point forward, our purpose was to build replicas like this one throughout. Our original business plan was to build all 100 counties in North Carolina, and then go into South Carolina and Virginia and the other states. Well, excuse me, about four years into the process, we began to be discovered in all parts of the country. We now have settings in Illinois, Indiana, Kentucky, Utah, South Dakota, Nebraska. I probably left something out, but that's from the top of my head on where we have located. And we have a, a number throughout North Carolina, but we have returned to our original business plan, which was to build out North Carolina. We would very much like the opportunity to build the charters of freedom in your beautiful We will build it as close as humanly possible to what is on display in Washington, D.C. Now, let me say a couple of things about that. When we first started to build the charters of freedom, you can't take a tape measure, you can't take a camera, you can't take anything that would, would help determine the dimensions, and nowhere will you find printed the dimensions of the charters of freedom. So, our settings are based on, our settings are based on four steps of a short guy and markings on the side of his wife for the, for the height dimensions, and the rest of it is guesstimation work. But I think we're pretty close in what we build as being duplication. Now, let's talk about construction for just a minute, and once again, thank you for your time. I know you've, you've had an interesting board meeting already, but zoning issues are always fun to deal with, aren't they, commissioners? Yes, sir, they always are. We go down three and a half feet, and we build the foundation, we put reinforced concrete in that site. There's 19 tons of concrete that go, that will go into that initial foundation. I have a colleague that works with us on our team, there's six of us, and he is a retired sergeant major from the Army, and he was a tanker in the Army. And I've heard him say on multiple occasions that he could run a tank into our setting and it wouldn't move, but let's not try that. If you have a reserve unit here that's, that's in tankers, we, we don't wanna test that.
Right.
But anyway, there's 19 tons of concrete that goes in the ground, and after that, we build up what we call the core, again, with reinforced concrete on top of that. The side displays are four by four, the middle is four by 12, which houses the, the Constitution. Then on the top, we put in trays that are also manufactured out of concrete, and we place the documents within those trays. After the documents are, by the way, the documents weigh about 60 pounds, they're etched bronze, and we put a special type of glass on top of that. Now, we have changed glass one time since we started. When we first started building the charters of freedom, we didn't have the availability of the glass that we have now. This is the glass that skyscrapers are built out of around the world, that there's only one or two places in the world that manufactures that, that glass that we use there. That's what it looks like when we're finished. This happens to be a granite setting. This is the setting at the Historic Courthouse in Burke County. The Declaration of Independence is on the left, the four pages of the Constitution are in the middle, and the Bill of Rights is on the right side. We commissioned an artist to create us an emblem that would personify or visualize what we do, and this is what the artist came up with. The eagle represents the Declaration of Independence. It's strong, defiant, not wavering on, on anything. The stars at the top represent the articles of... The stars at the top represent the articles of the Constitution, and the stars at the bottom represent the articles of the Bill of Rights, or the numbered Bill of Rights. We put a vault in the back of the center setting, and we would like for each of you and perhaps the superintendent or the people in the county that you would identify as having a significant role in your government, to put items within the vault on the back of the. Now, Mr. Chairman, I want your colleagues to know that once we do this and we set this in place, that we're going to leave the combination to the vault with you. So if people are wondering, on September the 17th, 2087, what the combination to the vault is, remember, we left that with you.
You might be still around, Louis.
Oh, boy. That's the plaque that goes over the back of the center setting that. David and I put this slide in there to, so I generally tell a little funny story here. And I know you've had a long night, and I promise not to keep you much longer, but there's a story that goes by with this particular slide. Vance Patterson comes to me after I had been retired a couple of years, and he says, Ron, I need you to set up a meeting with Mayor Cohen. And I paused, and I said, Vance, county managers and mayors don't get along too good. He said, sure, I know you can do it, Ron. I'd like to have a meeting with Mayor Cohen. So I call the city manager, who is a good friend of mine, and we set up the meeting with Mayor Cohen. About 30 minutes later, my cellphone rings, and it's the mayor on the phone. He says, Ron Lewis, we're going to have this meeting you want to have, and we're going to put everything that you and I didn't agree to in the past, and we're going to move forward. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had the meeting. And we were in a large conference room, and the mayor's staff was there, and our staff was there. And the mayor says, Mr. Patterson, where do you propose putting the charters of freedom? And Vance immediately said, out there where the old dead tree is. Well, Mayor Cohen had planted that tree 30 years earlier, and that was the Christmas tree that they always had lit for Christmas. So his staff went, and everybody was holding their breath, wondering what the mayor was going to do. And gentlemen, the mayor was the first one to say that, I guess the old tree's got to go. That's what it looks like today. Now, you didn't see those flagpoles in that first picture, did you? It opened up that site so much, and it's so beautiful now. We're very, very proud of our first charters of freedom outside of Washington, D.C. That's located at the Historic Courthouse in Burke County. This one's in Burnsville. It's a brick setting. This one is in Asheville. I told you the Asheville was the second one that we built. This is in Kokomo, Indiana. That's the first one that we built out of Indiana limestone. I always thought that Washington, D.C. was built on concrete. That's not concrete. That's Indiana limestone, for the most part, that all of our beautiful buildings in Washington are built from. This is the first one that we made out of limestone. Well, we have a fun day, gentlemen, the day that we dedicate the charters of freedom. We will, hopefully, all of you will be there, the manager and his team will be there, and dignitaries to the county will be there, and we'll have a very, very fun day that day. We truly have an excellent rapport with the veterans. Every veteran that has served in this country took an oath to protect and defend that Constitution. So veterans really enjoy what we're doing, what we are doing. I'm guessing that you have a strong veterans' organization here, don't you?
Yes, sir.
I just sensed that that was here. Now, I won't keep you much longer, but, and this is Jacksonville, Illinois. On the day that we did the dedication, it was pouring rain, and we had 200 people that endured the pouring rain so that we could dedicate the charters of freedom there. Gentlemen, this is what we do, this is why we do what we do. Here we have a teacher with her students around the charters of freedom, learning about the founding documents of this great country, learning what the founding fathers went through to create this country. She might cover a little bit of local history and about Rockingham County. But this is why we do what we do, to educate our children and to educate future leaders on the documents. There's old Ben. I told you that I have been known to dress up like Ben. My wife would like me to lose the Benjamin Franklin profile. She's a cardiac RN, and keeps telling me that that's not in my best interest to look like Benjamin Franklin. But this is a group of homeschoolers. We find that homeschoolers, our charters of freedom are like a magnet to the homeschoolers. They love to come out to our settings and learn about the founding documents. This is another learning event. Okay, I'm just about ready to finish. I know you've had a long night. There are 3,142 counties, boroughs, Louisiana, parishes, and special districts. So our goal over the next 10 years is Foundation Forward, is to build as many of those as we can. We hope to get your support to gift to Rockingham County the charters of freedom. To us, it's all about education access in the community. David, I'm going to turn this back to you.
Thank you, Ron. One thing I would like to clear up is Lieutenant Lewis was correct. He was an officer in the Marine Corps. I was an E-3, assigned to JAG in the Navy. And the reason I think that I outrank him is because the Marine Corps belongs to the Navy, and they don't get anything without it coming through and being approved by the Navy. So we'll let that stand at that point.
That's right, that's right.
When this program is adopted, this is a sequence of events that we go through. The first thing up there is a presentation to the local government, which we're doing here tonight, acceptance of the project with the site approval, letter of intent, or what others know as a memorandum of understanding, is signed between the local government and Foundation Forward. A project manager is named to be like a liaison between the local government and Foundation Forward to answer questions and get things done and move forth. We have put together a steering committee of many different people in the community to help with this, including community support. Then the building and the construction of the charters of freedom. And then when that's about 50 to 75% finished, then we will come up and establish a dedication date. And like Ron says, that's a great day to come out and celebrate. Those events usually take about 45 minutes to an hour, and everybody has a great time. Then about six months after that dedication, we collect letters from officials such as yourself, others in the community would like to do that. On the day of the dedication, we ask everyone to sign their name. It's on special paper that should endure the test of time. All of those things go into the time capsule, which is put into the back in the safe of the setting. And then, from there, it will be open in 2087, and then every 100 years thereafter. I plan on being at the first couple. I don't know if I'll be there, but that's what I plan on. But anyway, the only other thing that I have, and I'm going to turn it back over to Ron, is that we are an education institution. As being the director of education, I like to meet with the superintendent of schools. Usually when I do that is when I need your help, for those who know the superintendent. If I go in and tell, call the superintendent's office, or go in, try to set up an appointment, I usually find that to be impossible to do. They think I'm there to sell them something. Well, we do have educational materials that focus on 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders. I'm working with a historian right now in eastern North Carolina, down by Rocky Mount. We're putting together special outlines for teachers, for middle schoolers and high schoolers. But we give all of that stuff away. All I want to do is meet with the superintendent, maybe the principals of superintendents, and also their academic specialists, so that they know what we have. Others are welcome to attend also, such as teachers. And I am willing to make special trips down to meet with those folks. But because they think I'm selling something instead of giving it away, I find it difficult to get in. Also, we give money to the local school system to help finance field trips to the settings when teachers take to see them. But like I said, I'll need your help getting in to see the superintendent. So I'm hoping, isn't someone here an educator I heard earlier?
I think we can take care of that.
Okay, that sounds good. I would appreciate that very much. And again, this is a little model of what we have, as far as the setting has, and if you have any questions, we're here to answer those. And Ron, did you want to finish up here?
Commissioners, we've taken two months of your time, but thank you so much. I'm fairly good at reading your body language, and I don't think we have bored any of you. So that means we've done our job. Do you have any questions of me?
Gentlemen, is there any questions? Okay. I don't think so, but we certainly, I certainly, I think I can speak to the board. Appreciate y'all, everything that you presented here tonight. And as I stated earlier, when we was going through the agenda, we're not going to take action on this, but our manager will be getting in touch, and I think we're very interested in proceeding forward. And so I think the manager will be in touch. We can knock out your checklist.
I think we're interested in proceeding forward and having a location here in our county seat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes.
That's our preference, is to work with the counties. There are communities that have municipalities that tend to be very strong, strong-willed and strong ideas. We prefer to work with the county, because it is a gift to the citizens of the county. And we're proud to be able to do that gift. And our experience shows that the best place to do that is with the county. Again, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. If not, I'm going to forego the video, because you've already had enough tonight.
Well, it is on the computer, if you'd like to see it. It's four minutes, so at your leisure, you can watch that.
And if you get us a copy of that, I'm sure we'll all.
Okay. It's on your computer.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much, and thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, gentlemen, we've come to Commissioner's comments, and I'm going to start with Commissioner Travis.
I have no comments.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson.
Thanks for everybody that came out. Pleased to see you, and like many zonings, we didn't all get our way. It's kind of tough to do that, but it's good that the citizens come out and speak for what they, and let us know about their preference. And I greatly appreciate, tell the rest of them, Tommy, including Steve Ahern, we appreciate them taking the time to let us know what they feel about this. And I would mention to the rest of the board here, in the not-too-distant future, I hope to bring in a representative from the rocktop that has a new program that they're hoping to initiate, and I think all the county will be interested in. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Ron Lewis and David Streeter being here tonight with charters of freedom. And again, as usual, thanks to everyone for participating in your government tonight. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Berger.
I do also want to thank everyone for coming out. Also want to mention, Ms. Stephanie Ellis was able to secure a grant through the COPS grant for school security, and that amount is somewhere in the neighborhood of $500,000 for our county. So I appreciate her hard work. So, that's it.
Thank you. I too would like to thank the charters of freedom. I'd like to say thank Ron and David for being here tonight, and thank them for what they do. That's a very patriotic thing that they do, and spend their time for our future, for the kids. I'd like to thank, I've seen elected officials, let's see, we got elected and appointed, Sheriff Page was here earlier tonight, it's Tony Reece and Ms. Bonnie Perkins for the Board of Elections. Appreciate y'all's support and being here. I forgot to do something last meeting. I talked about Dr. Jerry Owens passing away, but also I attended the funeral visitation for Mr. Forrest Bray. He used to sit right there and be an active part of our government. What a pleasant man. And he'll be missed. He was a good man and was a participant in our government and held folks accountable. So for that, I say he'll be missed. And with that being said, gentlemen, instead of adjourning, I'm going to entertain a motion that we recess until October 24th at 8:30 a.m. We will reconvene right here in the Commissioner's Annex, which is on the other side of that wall. When we reconvene, we'll immediately go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-3, 18.11 AB, to discuss personnel. I'll have to set a mouthful, but.
So move.
I appreciate Commissioner Richardson, and I appreciate Commissioner Hall seconding that. Do I have any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Thank you. I got something for you. Do you got just a second?